Maybe if I'm another one late, but.
Stop recording.
You can tell he kinda knows what he's doing out there. He's got a good sense of where to be and what to do and that kind of thing. He listens, yeah.
Have to come in here? Have to come in here?
Dick said he's not coming. Is there some funeral for somebody?
Yeah. That weigh him down.
Kevin's eleven.
Jack.
Brian's probably been eating his pet deer. I'm gonna go past his yard, he's got three or four small deer in his yard. So I think he must be eating up something really good back there.
I was actually hoping I was gonna be on my way to Chicago, but never got the call. We have to go tomorrow, I don't know.
What's in Chicago?
Oh, there's a couple of parts we need for a waterline project.
You took the bullet and designed it?
They asked for volunteers to go get it and I said, this is some casinos between here and there.
Such a true heart.
I said, you pay for all my gas and it's Christmas that far out there. They're supposed to dig them up today, didn't know enough for the weather, held them up from digging up to see what they needed and uh. I didn't get the call.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait till, until tomorrow and see what happens. It's what now?
Is that somewhere about five to ten?
Five to eight, eight thirty. Fireworks at eight thirty. I think we should have made it from three to, or three thirty to eight thirty or something like that.
I'll be off hard for three, I guarantee.
Well, I've got another function earlier today and so I can get back, but I told everyone to be there at four. I figured we'd fire up the grill and when people are hungry, we're gonna start selling at four o'clock. Even if the health department doesn't care. So that's probably, I was just cooking for my friends. They just had that jar out there, they were putting three bucks in, I don't know why.
What's a donation?
Donate fifty cents more and we'll put cheese on it.
There's that commercial about charging extra or something. It said like the science is a bird or something like that and they hand it to them and you wanna bun all that texture. That texture, that texture. I'll remind you, you just said that, but that buns the plates, I need to get foil. Lots of that pre-cut foil where you put the bird and wrap them up.
Now what made you think of that when I said buns?
I didn't, something to put the bun on. We, cause we're gonna do plates.
Five thirty, time for public service.
Okay, we're gonna start. How's everybody doing tonight?
Doing fine.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Just getting started.
Just getting started. I can't, yeah, it may not appear, I can't, but I can't.
Update on Franklin Avenue Waterline and Pump Station. Like I said, some of this may be repeat, but it's kinda like to bring you up to date. You know, all the contracts and everything, been signed with T L V out of Johnstown, Ohio. On August twenty eighth, two thousand twelve construction is to begin. That's what this little form here is that I passed out kinda shows. That they're gonna start on the twenty eighth and mainly they're concentrating on the pump station. You know, the foundation and building of the pump station, so that's kinda where we're at there. The water line, in case anybody's interested, if you get asked any questions on Franklin Avenue, that will start on the seventeen. Just to kinda let you know, I think about twenty-five percent of the total project, maybe about twenty percent of the total project that looks to me like it's gonna be directional drilling. So, so a lot of it won't be open, won't be cut. I'd say about twenty percent is what, kinda looking at the total water line that has to be laid. Of course, you know, a big portion of that's going under Oakwell. Another portion of it is where it parallels a sewer line. It has to be put in from the EPA H D P E Schedule eight eleven, which is a real thick plastic because it's near us. Those state engineers would work in it. So look for the, where the water lines start on the seventeen of Franklin Avenue. I try to keep everybody updated as much as possible. We talked about a couple of staging areas. I gave the information to TAD, the T L V. Because they're gonna have a few staff pipe created under the road on Oakwell and up on the southern section there of Franklin Avenue. So we were looking at a cornfield owned by Mr. Bovard and a section of ground there owned by Mr. Campbell. So he will be getting in touch with that since he's the contractor. They have six months to complete it and we signed it about three weeks ago.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
When you. Is there a way to, do they pull some kind of tracer wire or anything with that when they do that?
Yeah, it's required to have a tracer wire pulled with it. The specifications that we're working on, it's been updated, we've updated it a couple of times in the last couple of months. Requires that they have tracer wire on all pipe instead of plastic. If there's a tracer wire attached to the, to the pipe and then two feet above the tracer wire, it is the tape. It has to be installed. Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, any questions on Franklin Avenue? Update on water and plant improvements. Mayor and I met with Burgess and Nyphle in the beginning to start negotiations. We thought we were gonna get into negotiations, but I asked for a preliminary construction cost before we got into the engineering, cause I didn't wanna engineer something that we couldn't afford. So we started on a, had a preliminary cost. And I'll kinda talk a little bit about what we wanted to do. Sometimes you have tendency to include things that you think is gonna be cheaper in the long run because construction people and everything are there, but when you start weighing it everything out, it actually kinda exceeds what you, what you thought it was gonna be at. Clarifier number one, concrete condition. What we were actually thinking about doing was we were going to keep clarifier number one. We were gonna have the concrete tested. Concrete clarifier number one's a nineteen fifty-seven model. Was designed in nineteen fifty-five. However, the concrete condition of that unit was in better condition than nineteen sixty-nine. Our original intention was to possibly see if we could retrofit that with a new IMCO unit, steel unit inside. And we would gain a million gallons on the plant very quickly. We would go from four million gallons a day to five million gallons a day, but that's what we thought. We were gonna demolition, have demolition of number two clarifier that is here. And then this is number one that I just talked about. Number two will be totally demolished. And then of course, we're thinking about putting in a new clarifier, very similar to three here, right beside three. And that's something that we talked about. That's something that will happen, demolition of clarifier number two. This kinda gives you an overall view of the two, of the three clarifiers. These two clarifiers here will be replaced with a new one like number three, which does the same capacity. So we're updating the clarifiers due to the age and the condition of the steel and the concrete, especially on number two. We're wanting to update that with a new clarifier. This is the area beside number two, we're looking at this area back in here right now. We can move the new clarifier and that will be finally decided by the engineering firm that gets the job. We have not actually picked Burgess and Nyphle yet, but we're still in negotiations with them. But this clarifier here could move out a little bit, could move in, could actually be exposed a little bit on the, on the back side of there. Of course, that's what all the guys wanna do, is that keeps them from having to mow that steep bank right there. So I think you put a concrete tank in there. This is some of the concrete deterioration on number two that's taking place. I know you've seen the pictures before. Steel down inside is kinda in a brutal condition. The weirs we had adjusted in the different ways, so when the water comes up, we don't get an even flow over into the weir collection weirs. Cause we've modified things so much that the steel's actually kinda cockeyed. So the guts, this, this particular clarifier wouldn't go down. That's a pipe gallery and that's actually, it's supposed to be up this way, but it's on its side. But that's the condition of the pipe gallery, which is in this pit right here. But it's in pretty bad condition. That was, if we did keep clarifier number one, that would be one of the additional expenses that we looked at and was gonna cost us more than that. Also, we were gonna put in a new drain, clarifier number one. Cause it doesn't drain, we have to pump it now and that was gonna be an additional expense. Improvements to chlorine feed equipment and delivery. We have decided to stay with the gas chlorination. I know we checked into liquid, liquid feed would be a lot more expensive for us to, to put in, be the cost of the brand we're building. So concentrated on trying to make this chlorine feed system safer by the addition of automatic turn downs on the cylinders. Those are the four cylinders that are in use. We would install automatic shut offs on the top of those. So if there's a sensor in there and if it would sense chlorine leak, it would automatically shut down. Scrubber unit would also be put in, if there wasn't chlorine released inside the building, we could scrub the chlorine out and release it into the atmosphere. That is one of the improvements. These are all improvements that we talked about in the beginning. New high surface pumps. From the expansion last time in nineteen ninety-eight, everything's ready to go for two new high surface pumps. Everything's designed with electrical control tangels here and these holes here, fit a pump right down inside. There would also be a variable frequency drive, which will save electricity. And also you can tune it in as to how many gallons per minute. Now everything's banned, you know, you can kick on the pump and it's five hundred gallons coming in or a thousand gallons per minute, whatever pump decides to do. With variable frequency drive, you can dial in, say you wanna, maybe a thousand gallons per minute this day, maybe fourteen hundred gallons per minute next day or maybe later on in the day. Or however you want to match your flow to as well, so. Also, we were gonna do a brief study on the distribution system to determine if the high surface pumps were the proper type of high surface pump. We've made several modifications to the distribution system, so we wanna make sure that the pumps can put out the adequate amount of money, adequate amount of water and fill all the tanks adequately. Right now, we have a little bit of lag on the west side of town, so when we close the valve on Dodgeville Reservoir where the main gallon reservoir is, we start, because it's short circuits, everything from the plant goes to the closest location first. When we close that valve down, then it forces more water to the west side of town where our half main gallon reservoir is. We think that that could be a little more efficient if the high surface pumps are up here. And that is, this is a high surface building here, this is a high surface building. That's a C O two ten, really don't have too much to say about that, I don't know why. I am going to talk a little bit about these two high surface pump stations. This is a half million gallons of water under the ground. This is about a hundred thousand of gallon, hundred thousand gallons under the ground. Currently, we have a lot of problems keeping chlorine residual because we have pumps here and we have pumps here. The water's treated, it's put through the plant and then there's a pipe that goes from here to here and then these two tanks ride like this together. But what's happening is we'll have like more chlorine here than what we have here, so when we switch pumps here, then chlorine residuals go down in the system. And then things kinda balance out, or we'll switch the next day over to the high surface pump here, then this is real high and this may be lagging in chlorine. Anyway, what we're talking about doing is this nineteen fifty-seven model is, we're thinking about demolishing it out. And everything, all the high surface pumps will be moved up to here, which would give us a more consistent chlorine feed and treatment feed. This really is so small and inadequate, the building size and everything, it's his time. I mean, when we planned in nineteen ninety-eight, it was planned for this to eventually go away. And that's what we're, that's what we're gonna plan to do. Drain in the splitter box, all the water comes in from the wells out in this location, comes in through a valve here that we can open or close. Goes into here where it's aerated, from the aeration unit, it goes into the splitter box. One of the other improvements we talked about was in the middle of the splitter box, there's no drain. So if you need to clean something real fast or whatever, you have to go get a pump, get a pump it out. We talked about putting a gravity drain in the middle section of this, which is right in here. Water all comes up through this middle section and then it splits to the three different clarifiers. Which is the three clarifiers and this is what splits the flow. Another thing we talked about in the wa, bogged water, in the way of time, we get a lot of heavy trucks that come in here and get water, bogged water. There wasn't an adequate base put in here, so when it overflowed, it kinda just deteriorated. And I just put gravel down. I've involved well, you know, maybe since we have contractors and everybody here, it'd be cheaper to just go ahead and redo this, put a nice base in here, then put a concrete pad. Something in here so that it'll be a little cleaner and a little nicer. That was one of the things that we talked about. This would be where the scrubber would be put in, in the chlorine area, right in the front here. There would be a wall building across here and then the scrubber unit would set right in here, there'd be a tank that would set outside. So we don't have to build a new building or anything, but the scrubber unit would actually set outside. Tanks full, filled with the media, it absorbs chlorine. Once the chlorine's absorbed, then it can, and it's, then it's useful life, the media can be transported to a dump, disposed of. Costs about eight thousand dollars to replace the media. For the size of the media that we're talking about.
But John, it's the, the only way it's gonna get loaded up and have to be cleaned out is if you truly have a leak there, is really. Ultimately.
We always have, we always have like little leaks. Like you may, you know, you may walk in and smell a little something and you may turn on the thing and it goes outside. Oh, you know, some, some, when you're changing cylinders, there's always a little bit that's up to the atmosphere. You know, it could be used, I think, for something like that where, you know, or sometimes it'll happen, you know, you'll walk in there and there'll be something that's stuck in the the little pin thing there, the seals, or a piece of dirt sometimes that'll leak off into there a little bit. We get a call, like we said, that something's going on, cause that's all on the skater. Okay, so in summary, we have, we were looking at a new fifty-two foot clarifier, new high surface pump. Now, basically, everything, we, we kinda nixed a lot of the stuff because of the cost. The engineers brought estimates close to one point nine million on all the improvements that we're talking. We told them.
Not even.
No, yeah, not even all of them were in there. So we told the engineer that we had to be closer to one point five. When we went to the one point five, these are the things that kinda came to the top, the most important things to be, to be done down there. New fifty-two foot clarifier, new high surface pumps to clear water here. Demolition of clarifier number one and two and the third well and the pump station. A new, new clarifier we built.
Okay, so you were talking about.
Yeah, we, we, we thought that, you know, it, it may be smart to try to save number one clarifier. But when you start getting into the cost of what it's gonna take, the material, the equipment inside for the.
For the inspection of the tank itself, to see if it'll work.
Piping on the, on the, in the pipe gallery or correcting things that should be corrected in the drain system, different things that just ended up. We thought, what we thought was that we could maybe make a quick million for not a whole lot of money, additional treatment. But it ended up being.
As it turned out, it would cost almost as much. It would be a little bit more to just, if time came, to put a whole new clarifier in the size of number one than it is to try to retrofit and keep number one online. So we don't need that extra capacity today, we could add it easily if we need it and so it doesn't make any sense to try to retrofit it and pay that if we don't absolutely need it today.
So what eventually will happen is that there'll be a clar, the clarifier here, a new one will go in. Eventually, probably this building will go in and your third clarifier, when you go to six million, will go in here somewhere. Somewhere we're close to where this building is.
John has a cookout for the part-time guys in that building, we'll have to find a different location.
I think we'll go to the distribution building, probably.
John, the fifty-two foot clarifier, is that like a standard size or did it just come out fifty-two or I mean, how, what, I mean, it just seems like an odd number, fifty-two.
Fifty-two foot clarifier treats two million gallons a day. From the engineers.
Why does that know for design purposes, if, if, you know, you lose a bit or gain a little bit more, I mean, if it's not fifty-two, if they're designing it, don't it, is it any cheaper maybe to make it fifty-five to make it fifty, sixty, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is it fifty-two, is it costing us more because it's an oddball size than it is? You know, I didn't know, I don't know, I did, that's why I wonder, I thought maybe fifty-two was a standard.
As they try to match them, it's because it's easier to get a chemical split, split in your chemicals. Half of it's going this way and half of it's going that way. That's what they're trying to do. But you know, I'm, I'm sure that's something that they can be looking at in the future.
You know, I did, you know.
We, that'd be a good question, but I think that's.
I just, I just.
For a little bit more money, have a little bigger tank and maybe.
You know, there's sometimes if you build like a smaller building, it costs you more than a bigger building because, because everything's standard, it just fits right, they don't have to cut, they don't have to, you know. And I just think, is because you make it, does it make it a standard, or do they have to retrofit something or what?
We wanna kinda stay in the budget, but it seems like every time someone gets a good idea like that, then the prices start going up again and then you have to go to the mayor and mayor of that. We're gonna stay within the budget, you know.
But I just wonder why it's fifty-two, I just, you know. If you're building, you're tearing down, you want the size you want, you know. Maybe a sixty, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, I know exactly what you're saying, but what you think.
Is it depth, is it width too and depth, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, depth and all that has to do with it.
Okay. I wonder also, John, these, the guts of the clarifiers, right? I mean, they're not custom-made for each clarifier that's put in, I mean, they're standard sized equipment, right?
It may be set like fifty-two, fifty-four, you know, or maybe, I don't know what they are exactly, because we haven't gotten anything out of much bigger than this before, so.
Basically, all we're looking to try to do is duplicate what we have in clarifier number three.
Can we get fifty-five years on it next time?
This one has went fifteen years with, all we've done in this is change the oil and clean it. Now, that's another thing that we talked about doing is, we kinda wanted to go in and maybe drop this down and do some, make, see what IMCO suggests for like some major repairs at a fifteen year period. We, that's something we could put in our own budget, it doesn't need to be included in this upgrade. I mean, that's something that we can do along with a tech issue to help, to help make it nice. So that was another thing that was thrown out, you know, and there's been a lot of things thrown out. When we plan these things, I mean, you know, we sat down here and we talked with the operators and the mayor and everybody and we kinda shoot up the question, what, how we think we could get the most bang for our buck. But then we start putting numbers on paper, then, then you start seeing.
One and two capacity, a million gallons?
Yes, million, million two.
And you were here when three was put in?
I was there on three.
And you only had one and two then?
Yes.
And when you started, what was, what was the capacity, what were we at, a daily average?
Well, that, if you were, today's standards, one and two in the summer time wouldn't adequately treat enough water, I mean, it would be, you'd be really close to not have, not added right enough. Since days we've done one point eight, one point nine, real close to two maybe.
And you.
And you'd have to run totally solid around the clock to get that.
Okay, so how long have you been in that department? Twenty years?
Me?
Yeah, thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty, it was thirty, okay. So thirty years ago.
Started as a meter.
How many, how many gallons, what was the daily average twenty years ago?
Oh, I mean, I could go back and look, but you know, twenty years ago, probably a little over a million, maybe a million.
And now we're, we've almost doubled in twenty years then.
Our average is what, about one point five? We're peaked at about one point eight or one point nine.
When, so, and if they're wanting, so we're basically gonna end up with the same capacity, you know, when, when, I mean, at what point? And I know it's hard to, you know, there's not a crystal ball, cause it depends on industry and, and residential growth, but how long do you think that that four million, I mean, we, we, we're not even at double, we're at half capacity.
You're in good shape, you're in good shape. And the reason why you're working this upgrade is not necessarily that, you don't need to get any bigger than it. What you're doing is you're replacing the units that are, has seen their useful lives, you know. I mean, you're, you're looking at units here that are fifty, fifty-five years old.
Fifty-five years old.
You know. So it's the steel and the concrete and it's those issues, we're, we're, we're not really looking for expansion, but the reason why we kinda went in that direction, possibly seeing if we could retrofit this, was we thought we could gain an eight gallons, that may be a relatively cheap price. So down the road, you know. If we went, yeah, if whenever, you'd have that capacity if you needed. Or you had an industrial customer that came in here that needed a half million a day, you, you, all you did is, oh my god. I mean, we're, we're pretty good shape now, don't get me wrong, we're in good shape. But now it's, it's just, we're kinda, just kinda wrapping this project up and making it for the next twenty-five years what's existed.
Twenty-five years of growth, four million gallons should, and we actually saw less water here in, here out, right?
Yeah, some of us, maybe it goes up a little bit every year.
Does it?
Yep. And, you know, it's actually the pool just doesn't have a lot. I mean, as soon as that pool shuts down, I drop all the dumb down.
The sixty year history of Heath Bigby, that's probably the best return on investment I can imagine we've ever had.
This has always been a money maker, I mean.
Just the, the, the years.
Rest of the water plant.
Fifty-five years of original technology, young village, that's. Today's technology, you, you think we could potentially get some things that resemble fifty-five years?
It's tough to tell because that's sixty-nine clarifier number two, that's in worse shape than the one from fifty-seven, so.
You're making fifty cents for all done.
All I can say is this one. This one's got fifteen years of.
I'm just getting started.
But look at the bridges, we replaced after twenty-five or thirty years.
In the seventies, everybody tried, I don't know why, but, I mean, I, but in the seventies, these two units here were left together pretty bad. I mean, nobody wanted to spend any money to repaint them, and I don't know if it was just the, you told us Drucker at that time, or he didn't? But I mean, these things were really rough, and there was, they were covered with rust. And we let stuff go like that, right now, it starts, it starts playing.
The, the reason I asked the question was a capacity issue, but there's not a capacity problem at all.
Yeah, that's why I asked, they're in good shape. So, you know, these are the ones that we're, uh, that we're concentrating on, uh.
No, 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 these are the ones we're gonna look at.
These are the ones that we're mainly concentrating on, these are the ones that we think that we can put off to a later day. Uh, chlorine gas solution upgrade, uh, that's where we're gonna do some upgrades to the deep system inside. Uh, but, clarifier number three improvements, uh, that's where we're gonna do the improvements to try to upgrade, make, see if there's any mechanical things or major things. We've maybe done it number three, which is put it in the O B, and the chlorine gas scrubber, uh, we were gonna put that off. Although now, some of the recent figures show that possibly we could put the chlorine gas scrubber back in. So, that's kinda what's showing.
What we need to figure out is how. Doesn't need to be engineered, the scrubber, you know, I mean, a scrubber's capacity is what a scrubber's capacity is. And we figure a worst-case scenario, you need a concrete pad to put it on, you know? What's the cost of it gonna be if it's run through this project as opposed to if we contact a company that sells scrubbers? And they say, oh, okay, what is the cost, you know, it's here, it's the installation. Kinda like what we're doing with the air raiders and the wastewater plant, you know? We didn't mean to run that through some big engineering project, it wasn't necessary. So, that's what we gotta look at, is what are we looking at cost-wise through B and N as we're doing all this? As opposed to what will it be if we just do it ourselves, you know?
Something, something I'm gonna propose, um, for this year's budget is, um, I'd like to propose some kind of replacement fund of, of wastewater. It's never been put in a place that pours water, like a, a, or you stick ten or fifteen thousand or twenty thousand of that in a fund for replacement of, of equipment. So, as, as things progress down the road to build up some money in that fund, you just hire a mechanic one to here, like a wastewater mechanical contractor. And purchase parts, you work with them, put the thing together, and you cut down some of these engineering costs. They'll be quite honest with you, you know, engineering costs are anywhere from ten to fifteen percent of total budget, it's pretty expensive. So.
I'm, I'm a little confused, you say engineering, in case we're specifically talking about the chlorine scrubber. That's it?
Yeah, that's a component of this total project that we think possibly that we might be able to do that on our own.
And you talk about the one in case you have a chlorine leak. Well, that machine should be pre-engineered by the company anyway, I mean, why would you, I'll tell you the capacity of it.
Basically, the engineer finds out what it does.
How many pounds it can handle.
We're gonna run them piping through, how to, they'll, they'll do the.
That's what I'm saying, see, it might not, it might be cheaper to do it that way, as opposed to having it somehow tied into, to this project with the clarifiers and all that.
So, to let you know what we're getting for our money right now, as the engineer's estimate is, we're looking at one million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Which is very close to over one million five hundred and thirty-nine. Now, thirty-nine thousand dollars could possibly, you know, depend on how competitive bidding is, it may be less than that, so it may fall to another level. But we're gonna bid it separate, so the scrubber, if you want to, or we may not even decide to do this well, but we can bid the, the, the scrubber unit separate. So that we can do the engineering or, or install that if we want to, if not, we can just leave it out and put that in at a later time.
So, that figure includes the scrubber, right?
Uh, yeah, after, after the cuts and everything, this is what you're getting, you're getting demolition of these three, though, these three clarif- these two, these two clarifiers and this clar- clear well and pump building. You're getting a new clarifier, you're getting new pumps in, in the high surface, uh, pump area. Again, you're getting a study done on this, on the distribution system, which should, should have not gone a lot as well we got.
B and N did the water modeling for us, if you remember, so it's just, it's just a matter of, of using that water model to figure out the types of pumps. To make it, to make it most effective for the distribution system.
On the, John, on the demo of the clar- clear well or whatever, that, you said it had a hundred thousand, hundred thousand tank, is that tank, is that your, are you demoing that tank too?
It'll.
Or you just.
It'll be how the, the building will come off.
Yeah.
And however the engineers spec it, I don't know if it's, a lot of the fill, I mean, they'll probably take this top off. And a lot of fill from putting in the new clarifier will go from here to here to, to fill that tank in, that's kinda what they're.
You don't think you'd ever need that tank later for any, any reason whatsoever?
I, I don't know, it's just a hundred thousand.
No, 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 I didn't know whether you could use it for anything else, I was trying to think if you could use it for anything to do with like the, the lime or anything like that, or to, to use it anyway.
Fishing pole?
You know?
I don't know, you, you know, I mean, I've run into this all the time, wastewater plants are probably the example for this. But, I mean, my personal opinion is we might as well demo it for, for the future. If not, it has a tendency to hang around, and if you walk wastewater plant, uh, even though they say that it can be used for something. I've never seen it used for anything, and it just kinda starts looking like an household.
And it's a safety issue.
And it's pretty typical case, you probably save some money by having a place that close to getting ready, you're spoiled.
Right.
You're spoiled.
So, you're using, you're u- you know you're using one, I mean, I can't also think of anything I know that we could use that for. That clarifier, I could have, but not.
So, I guess you brought up a question for me, and, and they're gonna leave the concrete wall tank in there and then just take the lid off?
I don't know exactly how they do that, sometimes they'll knock it in to a certain point. And I haven't gotten really with the engineers on that, what they recommend on that, they're just saying demo right now. And I've heard a lot of different things, I've heard where they remove it completely, I've heard where they just knock the side walls in and they fill it in, I've heard a lot of different things.
I just think when you bid that, you need to know, everyone that's bidding on it needs to know, 'cause, 'cause I know we do a lot of demo work in different times. And one guy's idea of how he's demoed and another guy's are completely different, and you get a price and you think, oh, they're gonna take everything out, it's gonna be nice. And they get in, they just, you know, dump everything in the hole and leave it, it's like, wait a minute, no, you know, you gotta haul that away, you know?
I'm sure the engineer will specify exactly how that's supposed to be, and they'll make sure that it's done right.
But, you know, your costs could change completely on that.
Well, especially for a future project too, I mean, that's why you almost wanna, do you wanna make sure they take that, I don't know.
Should be apples to apples when everyone's bidding, I mean, you're not gonna get, I mean, it'll be specifying exactly what, what has to be done with it. And everyone will bid the same when, how it's gonna be done. So, you know, I, it's, it's not like a, you know, we all spell that exactly what we have. Okay, any other questions, John? We're supposed to meet, uh, with B and N again in a couple weeks like that. And discuss this even further. When's my bill moved up, since they gave us those numbers, so I wasn't expecting them, I, I clicked, I was.
I've never noticed, one of this, this million times, there isn't a water replacement pump.
And there shouldn't have been a long time.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's amazing.
It just helps you save money for so many dollars.
What, what is the EPA, what is, what does the state say you have to get for water, money, money, sorry, that home? Water, money collected, you may need to do that, not wastewater, that's right, you can't miss, right?
So, the second. Any, anyone have anything else on? Um, I just wanted to talk briefly, uh, about some routine changes that we've been doing at the, at the, at the water plant. Cause I, I know I talk a lot about wastewater, but sometimes it's just like the water basket left out. And we're talking a little bit about what they, and if anyone knows it, and you may not be familiar with what we have and what we don't have, but, uh, this is actually at River Oaks, anybody know what this is?
Know where it is.
You know where, where it goes?
Yeah, back to the tank. Runs all the way back down the hill, yeah.
You walk down, see there and give musher, huh?
Been there before, you had that, before you had that gate, I've been down there.
What were you doing down there?
Up at the top of the River Oaks, that's up at the top of the River Oaks, they're up on the ridge.
Yeah.
It's a little, up in the new addition.
But that's the entrance to the half million, I mean, to the main gallon reservoir up on top of River Oaks. And what the guys did was it was starting to get overgrown a little bit, vines and everything, so they cut that back. This is actually the entrance to the, uh, to the main gallon reservoir. And it was starting to look a little rough too, and the guys cleaned everything out, and cut along the, uh, this, uh, uh, weight up on top. Uh, this is a kind of ground, I, they did a good job, so I wanted to recognize, uh, some of the work and stuff they did there. Uh, this is a generator that runs, uh, pumps and stuff up the, the gallon reservoir. Uh, this is actually the top of the reservoir on, on top of those steps. Uh, well, uh, if you stand up on top of there, there's a main gallon of water underneath there that feeds the city, that's our primary, primary water storage area. Uh, there's two hatches on top, this is one of them, uh, you know, you'll get a lot of growth and stuff going up inside there, and they trimmed all that out. That's actually the top of it, and you get trees and stuff growing, and the guys knocked all that down, blown it up, like a little house. You been back there, huh? I'm sure you, well, you've been back a little, I'll show you a little bit of that too. Uh, this is actually the River Oaks list station and the pump station, that is, uh, water and wastewater combined, they're the one. Uh, there's a list station there, and then there's also a pump station that pumps pressure in that top zone. We should have really had a tank there that fed that top zone, but this is working so far, but, you know, we'll see how it does when we get more and more houses up there. That would be interesting. Uh, so, anyway, just wanted to recognize what, what you guys did there, and if you want the mayor, this is also in the entrance, when you go into the entrance, you'll go around the corner, this is, it's off to the left. And you wrap around to the main gallon reservoir. Uh, some questions on well number five, you know, I, I, I'd like you guys to know, and I know the mayor's the mayor with it, we've been having a little bit of trouble with well number five. Uh, it's mainly, uh, here's the, uh, an iron problem, uh, it's plugging the stream, so they're in the process of cleaning that now. Uh, I think what contributed to that is a check valve, uh, in the, uh, a big check valve, uh, in the well that was bypassing water. And what, what's hap- what was happening was the wells were coming on, and the water was back feeding down inside of this well number five, because the check valve button closed when it wasn't running. So, what that does is it oxidizes and releases a water.
Iron.
Out of that, uh, out of the water, and settles down around, around the stream and plugs it off prematurely. So, it's something that we found out where there's a problem, so we're gonna replace that, that's a cost that we'll be taking out of the way we're budgeting. But that, that's a cost of replacing that check valve.
How far down?
Screens, the bottom of the screen is about two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, and then there will be cleaning the iron off the screen and stuff, so, so just to kinda update you on that. Uh, hopefully everything will come back to normal, but this is one of our oldest wells. It is getting close to the thirty-year mark. And the average life of production well is thirty years. We're hoping that comes back five and everything will be okay, but I'll keep you posted.
How long do you think we gotta be stopped for? Ten years out or?
You know, I, I, it, I think we need to talk to our hydrogeologists a little bit and see what they're allowing and what they're not allowing to happen. Because what, what's happening now, see, this was a well number four, and that is no longer, and that was a quick use of that. Uh, well five and six are back here, five is your next oldest. What they won't allow you to do anymore is you're not allowed to drill well anywhere around, let's not look at, not allowed to drill well anywhere around any septic system or a septic tank. So, you guys wanna be really aware of, when you start developing south fork, someone comes up with a great idea, and, oh, we need to put gold diamonds in there, and we need to put in a septic, septic tank, and we need to do it. Just remember that you have to be three hundred feet away from that septic in order to put a well.
South Fork. Draw the blank.
You, you, you don't know, but you might wanna explain.
We have another well field that's called South Fork.
That's the one that was bought?
Years, yeah, several years ago, I know I worked with those in the eighties, I think.
Oh, okay.
And, and purchasing it, we, you know, we went to several different sites and, uh, we walked them and different things, and we were trying, or several that we, we wanted before this one, but we ended up with this one that, um. When we went to try to purchase the property, people thought they could sell for enough money to put all their kids through college, retire, and all that, so. Anyway, we ended up getting this piece of ground, it's, uh, you know, it's a good piece of ground, Jess' question was, when do you think we can develop that?
When we're gonna need.
Where, where are we gonna need to?
On the, on the south, on South Fork Road, right before, you know, when you cross the bridge?
Yeah.
Just turn to the right, you go that way, and it's on the right-hand side, you know, shows.
You can't miss it, if you go down that road.
One of them two thousand something, across the councilway.
There's a fence on the right-hand side, that starts it.
There's a lot of, there's kind of a country, and then there's some nice residential zones in the last week on South Fork, didn't Richard?
I said cross the, or, I just wonder, cross the bridge, turn over to South Fork, I didn't. I was driving you from here.
It's right about over here, opposite of, uh, down the hill a little bit, here's your River Oaks condos, South Fork, I'm gonna, it's right in there.
Right in there.
Now, didn't Richard Wall buy some property, the council, less, bought some property for the same thing?
That's where we bought, that's where we bought, it was in two, I was like, I was on council, we bought it.
Well, he said, somebody said eighties, and I'm like.
That was really for Richard Wall, we got that.
Now, we bought that when I've been on council, and I've been on council since two thousand.
Since probably about the time, or so, twelve years ago.
Okay.
Actually, Dan Dubs was, was the mayor at the time, did it with a straw man. Know what a straw man is?
No.
It's when you hire a realtor to go buy the property, and doesn't say who the, who the buyer is, because the people wanted to sell it to the city for a lot more money. So, we bought it that way.
Has, uh, has anybody determined which was, uh, the extent of erosion on that property, or what impact that might have?
There is, there is, there's taken place on that, and, you know, I think we need to get a wheel and a house and everything out, but, yeah.
I'm just can't really think shore up, exactly.
Uh, I, I guess the question for you, uh, is, is sometimes EPA allows variances on different things. And, you know, we should show no effect of having from these wells, existing wells, all the way around us, it's blindly of anything happening or changing the water quality in any way. So, I would think that we could get, we wanna develop this well field, uh, go back well field and all that, it's the most, you know, for sure, we would think.
We could allow.
So, if we can get a variance, if they allow us to do that, I mean, it would have to be checked through the EPA, and we'd have to start getting serious about, you know, but it's something that we can look at. But, you know, I think there's a potential of drilling one more well on the way back in.
Really?
That's what I, I'm, I'm hoping.
Cause we got some under, some serious underground work to do to get back.
To get back, yeah. And you're already under the river, all that was put in several years ago. Uh, there's an HDP pipe that goes under the river, that's capped off on each side, so you'd have to go from, uh, you know, the turnaround down there, or go back. About that first house, you know, to, to the river, and then from the other side of the river to the South Fork. It's not as far as you think, it's not as far as you think, and, and we did, and there is a, there is, they are already.
Can I put the bridge in?
Red Fortin Park retired.
Are we, is that what, tell me about the bridge?
Yeah, I think that's how we got.
Do those together?
Yeah.
And then the bridge with the bridge?
Yeah, the bridge was put in, and then that water went out.
I'm just concerned about if you ever change an EPA, I mean, you could hook up more warning, you know?
Speed on that here, I'll show you here. EPA trade, I don't know if anyone went by the water plant last week.
I saw it.
Did you go by?
Oh, yeah, that was classy.
You ever see so many cars in all your life, they appear?
Uh, somebody went to. Uh, somebody with the white red plates, I ever see that at my place, I'm going out the back door.
Very uncomfortable.
Surprise visit?
Very, yeah, it wasn't a surprise.
Oh, that's right.
We're parking the car.
There's a training there and, and I got a few pictures, I snapped while I was taking my group around. We divided up into about four groups of fifteen EPA people. They're coming Wednesday to tell me their results, how we did on our inspection. Cause what they did was they went to the inspection, they did their training, and then they went back and they talked about what problems, if any, were there. They had a lot of good comments on how clean the plant was, you know, how nice it looked. You know, how we treated the water, it looked really good, so we had a lot of good uh comments. This is, that's my cam in there scratching his head right before everyone started coming in. And Steve Blob and two EPA representative, now those are federal EPA representatives. We had it from all over, we had it from state, uh, inside the state of Ohio, we had it from Indiana. We had federal EPA's there, we had one guy there I was talking to just briefly, he's in charge of water quality on airplanes. He's in charge of that program, so like if you're flying and you get a drink of water while you're on an airplane, he's the guy that heads that up. So, you know, so.
How were we not enough to get him here?
Tell him to be here. I'd be anyways. He was here?
Yeah, mine was huge.
I don't have to get training kits or to get, you know, if they have to do so much, or whatever. Anyway, this is when they started coming in. This guy here in the red shirt is Andy Baron Brock, he's in charge of all the certification of all the operators in the state of Ohio. You probably know him. Yeah, he was, he was, he was actually there. Why he would be there, I don't know, but yeah, he was there too. Uh, this is a group, and there were actually more than this going this way, and I just kind of snapped the picture, but we stood up uh there and then they said, okay, now for the training, we want you to ask these three guys and it was myself, it was me, Bob, Mike. We wanna ask, you ask these two guys all the questions you can think about this plane. And this went off for about a half hour, question after about a half, one question after about a question after. Uh, this is when the, when we broke up into tours, this was one group that went through the, our lab, this is the lab of the water plant. Uh, this is a group that actually watched the filter backwards. I don't think we've ever had that many people in, going backwards and filming, but this is Steve Blob.
Trying to get out of the way apparently.
These guys, I don't know what's going on, but they're kind of laughing, I think, but I snapped the picture, El De Canro. There was, this many people were in the building, there was that many people outside the building waiting to get in to watch the filter back.
Just, just a meter run around the tens of thousands of payroll dollars or.
But they left here smarter.
Okay, well, that's, that's a little bit about the EPA and our little visit, I could say we'll find out Wednesday, I guess Howard did. But they thanked us and like I said, I got, had a lot of really good comments. So I'd like to say, what do you say to the EPA when they ask you, you do this for?
Yes, sir.
I might get you that.
Did you get a free lunch out of it or anything? I'd send them a bill.
They came at one o'clock, but they, they came at one o'clock and left at four. So they were, they were there three hours at that plane.
They probably wrote it down as a convention.
Was it a couple days, two days, or just one?
It was just the one that. Now, they met more than that, uh, they met a day before and then a day after, the day of the tour and then the day after that to discuss what they.
I sent uh Steve and Mike and Bob an email note just basically saying, good job, we appreciate what you guys are doing down there.
The guys spent a lot of time, I mean, they, I mean, they, they really went through a lot, cause they were asked, I mean, if they were asked to make, I took one of the groups. And if they were asked to make presents, as I was asked, I know they were busy the whole time. And after it was over, what you was this exhaustion, because, you know, you're trying to think about, well, you know, I wanna answer this question, right? This was the way we do it. That's, covers everything in water and we'll talk about wastewater here briefly, uh, any questions on the water side? Okay, we're gonna wastewater, I just wanted to let you know on the thing that Mark was talking to us about, the well was kinda engineering everything ourselves. Uh, the ship date for the air headers is September seventeenth, I might have already told you this, but I wasn't for sure if I did. And then pumps are scheduled to ship on the twenty-fourth of September two thousand. Uh, wanted to show you this briefly, uh, this is the sewer line uh behind the post office on Handover Drive. Uh, it's getting in pretty bad shape, I'm getting prices on uh doing some repairs or lining of this particular sewer. Uh, if you can look at this, you can see the fractures that are taking place inside the pipe, they're getting pretty bad. These fractures here are very evident and very, very widespread here. This here is actually a lateral coming into the pipe and up above this you can see exposed dirt. This will eventually fall in. Uh, so I'm getting prices together on lining, I got one price that was ungodly, the line is two hundred foot section, is it two hundred foot? Yeah, somewhere.
I don't remember now.
I think it's a two hundred foot section where we're gonna go in and we're gonna try to line it, remember I showed you the point repairs? Where we did repairs on different things to certain points? Well, this is a little more widespread, so there, one, because it's so widespread, they're wanting to just line the whole thing. An initial price, I got twenty-eight thousand dollars, for twenty-eight thousand dollars, I think I could dig up and put in one new pipe.
What's the diameter of that pipe, is it eight inch?
Eight inch.
How long was it?
Uh, then whenever Southgate was put in, they got probably sixties. Yeah, mid-sixties. So, but wanted to show you guys, you know, what takes place underground on some of the sewers and reason why we catch this and why we camera so much, so many feet of sewer line every year is to find things like this. And we don't get caught where people don't have sewer because something's gaved in somewhere or whatever and we get ourselves in a fix. So, um, I don't know, I think we camera, what was it, about forty-five hundred feet this year. It's sounds right, so, so we're right in there. And we do that on a consistent basis and, you know, just two different sections of that. So.
Camera's paid for itself a hundred times over for all the troubleshooting.
Yep, yeah, it's worked out well. So other than that, um, Nick, do you have anything to add on the wastewater side?
No.
Uh, just, uh, the plant's been running excellent, uh, wastewater plant's been running really well. You know, we've been meeting all of our, switched labs, I don't know if I talked to you about that, went to a different lab. And the prices actually dropped on our cost on testing. I do want to mention one more thing, I forgot about it. This is a DMRQA thirty-eight, and what it is, is it's a certificate recognizing the City of Heat Lab on their testing results. What they do is they send you certain results, they send you like samples, and then you test those samples and you have to come within a certain range of those samples. If you don't, then you don't get a certificate, right? So ammonia, CBOD, E coli, total suspended solids, pH, total dissolved solids, total chlorine. You have to be within a certain range or you don't get a certificate, and we got another certificate this year.
So what, the state?
Uh, yeah, well, it's from this lab that we get, the state looks at it. This is a private lab that sends these samples out, and you pass it and then the state gets the results. But another thing I just wanted to mention briefly, kind of wrap things up, is that uh, we did switch labs. We found out when we switched that our mercury levels actually came down a little bit, because we were getting concerned that the mercuries were getting high and EPA was gonna make us go ahead and do a special program. When we switched to this new lab, we found out that our mercury concentrations started cutting down. And now we're within safe range just. So uh, either the lab wasn't running right or they were confusing our sample with another lab or, but we were, we were getting hits every so often. And when, when you get a bad, you know, high mercury every so often. Then.
Didn't the EPA make us increase our mercury testing because of those?
Yeah, yeah, they actually, I don't know if I answered this right. I think they were gonna make us, but I think, didn't we end up getting out of that? Did we, because of our newer results?
Yeah, Dan ended up getting out of that somehow.
Because we showed that we were coming down, so.
And the cost was, it cost the city so much to continue all those tests, that he, he showed consistently that he, it was coming down, so they kind of backed off. But they'll probably look at it again when they issue another permit, what, in five years?
Does anyone have any questions on what I talked about? Anything on the upgrades?
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Better rest of you than you get your mail. I don't think I'll be going.
I just wanted, I just wanted to share with you guys an email that I got yesterday afternoon. And then, which is at the bottom of page two and a little bit further on page three. That was her email to me and then you can see my email response to her that I sent this afternoon, so. I just wanted to, to share this with you. I know I've heard uh, a couple comments um on the citizenry about the safety improvement project and saying, well, gee, if you went and spent all that money on that, or if you had to spend all that money on that, you you know, wouldn't need a tax increase or whatever, so. Anyway, I um tried to lay out for Ms. Hunt some of the uh, some of the facts and, and information regarding the project and um, and, and the need for the, the tax increase, so. I just thought I'd share this with you guys because if I'm hearing things, you're gonna hear things and um, just wanted to let you know.